All right, welcome to City Hall. Tonight is August the 4th. Before we start the meeting tonight, Carlos Graham, Councilman Graham, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after that, with the prayer, then after that, we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll call the meeting to order.
Let us pray. Lord, fill us with your Spirit and courage, so that we might bring our talents and gifts to this meeting to do important work for our city. Open our minds to the task at hand. Open our ears to listen to each other. Open our hearts to your will. Heavenly Father, help us understand that it's not all about the first ward, the second ward, the third ward, or the fourth ward, the left or the right. But let our efforts be for your glory, for the support of all citizens whom you represent, and the advancement of our community. So, Lord, I ask you to look lovingly on this group gathered here this evening, as we discuss and deliberate on issues important to our community. Help us to be guided by your Spirit. Though we may at times have different views, make adjustments to one another, and be guided by common goals. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to read roll, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Costalis?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
We have a quorum tonight. At this point in time, we'll ask for adoption of the agenda. We do have some miscellaneous items underneath number four by Councilman Costalis. Is there a motion on the floor?
Second.
It's your second. All of them favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we will move into miscellaneous items by Mr. Costalis.
Okay, I just have a few questions this evening. I've been out and about town over the weekend, and got some input from a lot of the folks out there. Whittle it down to a few here. First, either Chief Turner or Mr. Marash, when will we be moving into the new fire station, and how much is it under or over budget? And then, I have heard that Fire Station Number Two has no water softener, and that several of the firefighters stationed there, current and in the past, develop kidney stones. I realize that under personnel and HIPAA laws, we are restricted in what information we can access. However, could we ask all firefighters if they would voluntarily tell us if they have had kidney stones, and if they were ever stationed at Fire Station Number Two? There may or may not be a correlation. Then appropriate action could be taken, if any is necessary. Mr. Crowell, could you provide me with a list for May, June, and July of all the runs the fire department has made that were in support of, or due to, the long response time of the county ambulance service? County made several promises when they took over the ambulance service. We should not be duplicating their service, so they can save money by providing less service or coverage than was promised. I do not want to jeopardize anyone's life by not responding to a call. And last, to all directors and their staffs, your support has been phenomenal. It makes answering constituent questions tremendously easier. Thanks for a job well done.
All right, thank you, Glenn. Mr. Crowell, would you please get all, if you, what you can with those questions to the councilmen as soon as you can, please? No need for the staff to try to answer all those tonight, obviously, but if you could do what you can, and obviously let the rest of the council know. And I guess in the future, I don't know what we'd want to do with certain topics that might deal with either public works, or public safety, or finance, but maybe the other councilmen could kind of weigh in that in the next couple of weeks and let us know. Once again, thank you, Glenn. No public hearing tonight, no appointments? Yes, sir.
I'm advised that I can answer some of those questions now, if you...
Oh, okay. Mr. Turner?
Well, to the question of moving into Fire Station Three, as soon as the contractor turns it over to us, we'll be glad to move into it. We suffered some damage in the storm in July with some drywall, so we're working with them to get that drywall replaced. I didn't want to move into the station and have a bunch of drywall taken down, and be a nuisance to the occupants of the structure. Let's get it fixed now, and we've got another issue with some drywall. As to the question about the budget, I shared this with the reporter, and I'll, it just happened to have it in my sent box that I sent last week. Budgeted for that project was $2.4 million, and the remaining balance in that budget line item is $4,918 and 65 cents. And I'll be glad to share with you any of the other items that are on this, and I can send this to you if you'd like, as far as the spreadsheet.
That's fine. Thank you very much for the information.
As to the kidney stones, that's news to me. Me and the counselor were talking, being a HIPAA issue, also a workman's comp issue. I can state that we know of no workman's comp issues, since it would affect us personally, knowing that, but outside of that, this is news to me.
All right. Stephen, Jason, thank you very much. Okay, nothing under number six, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. And we have Mr. Steve Vile here tonight. Mr. Vile, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and talk to you. Especially I'd like to thank Councilmen Bray, Mahalovich, and Ward for extending the invitation to me. What I'd like to talk, my name is Steve Vile. I'm president of the Historic City of Jefferson. Our group, as you know, is an organization that's been around for over 30 years, primarily focused on historic preservation, and just telling the story of Jefferson City's history. But preservation is really what we're all about. The reason I'm here tonight is to update you on the issue of abandoned properties from our point of view. You might recall, in the springtime, I came and talked to you about this issue, and told you that it's an issue of great concern to our organization, and to many people in Jefferson City. And we were thinking about, as an organization, what can we do about this? And one thing we thought we could do is research and study the issue, and try to present some information to the community about it. And so, our newsletter editor, Jenny Smith, who happens to be here tonight, embarked on a crusade within the newsletter that we do. It's called Yesterday and Today. I put a copy of this at your place, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, or you can study it after the meeting. Over the course of this year, we've been studying this issue and writing reports. One of our volunteer reporters for the newsletter, Kathy Bordner, actually put together the articles that you've been seeing this year on the issue. So we've spent three issues talking about it. The first issue really looked at the scope of the problem, and we were trying to basically just set out, you know, what is the problem here in Jefferson City, and how widespread is it? One of your former colleagues, Ron Medine, wrote an article for us in that issue, talking about it from his perspective. We also talked about the abandoned properties list, which is a city tool that the council adopted some years ago, and we think that's a step in the right direction, and we wanted to talk about in our newsletter, how that works. And you may recall that there are some fines involved, there are, there's some money that's involved. If you have an abandoned property, you have to list it on the registry. I believe the, it costs $44 to list it. And for every month that you remain on that abandoned property list, I believe it's a $32 fine, something like that. So, there is a little bit of pain for property owners who are on the abandoned property list, but it's pretty minimal, pretty minimal. The second issue that we came out with a few months ago, looked at the cost of the problem to Jefferson City. And that issue really looked at the tax base, the loss of tax revenue to the city of Jefferson, and to other taxing jurisdictions because of this problem. And I know you all are looking at tight budgets, and looking at how do you fund the programs? How do you fund police, fire, and public safety? And if you have a reduced tax base, that's very difficult to do. We found that in looking at that issue, on the tax base, just looking at that, the responsible property owners are really penalized. They pay at much higher rates than those who are on the abandoned properties list. And in that issue, a couple of months ago, we did a case study, and we took some properties in three different areas, Elm Street, Jackson Street, and East Capitol Avenue, and we showed what a property owner who's keeping their property up pays, what a similar property that's not being kept up pays, and we found out, over the course of about 10 years, those property owners will, the difference will be $7,000 to $12,000, property taxes paid versus not paid. So that's a hit for city budgets and county budgets, and it's not fair to those who are keeping up their properties. In that last issue, the one right before this one, we printed the names and addresses of all of those who are on the abandoned properties list. We felt it was important for the community to know who was on the list, and where those properties were. There were, as a result of that, I think there were calls, perhaps you got some, from owners who wanted to know, "I'm on the list, how do I get off?" That's a good thing. And I think city staff had to field a number of those calls. And so as a result of that, I think we've seen some improvements being made, some properties being sold, and in some cases, demolition has been the result. And of course, we always regret that as an outcome, and we do not wish for that outcome. There are other ways to handle it. But things have changed, and continue to change, and we're glad that that abandoned properties list is available. We understand some names have been taken off since we published that list, some other names have been added. This issue that you have before you, looks at possible solutions to the problem. We've highlighted some success stories. You know the success story of the 100 block of East Dunklen? There are others in our community that we can point to with pride. We have an article in this issue from Phil Freeman, who's chairman of the Old Town Revitalization Company, talking about the problem from his perspective. We also did a little more work in terms of research. We believe that there are other communities in this, in this country who have had the same problem, and have figured out ways to solve it. So our volunteer reporter and researcher Kathy Bordner went to Paducah, Kentucky, and that is a town that's similar in size to Jefferson City, and has also faced this problem. And the issue that you have before you outlines what they've done in Paducah, Kentucky, to solve the problem, or to at least address the problem. In one area of Paducah, Kentucky, where they've really worked on this, they have seen crime rates fall by 51 percent, because they've addressed this abandoned property issue in their community. We also looked at Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We're much smaller than Philadelphia, so I'm sure the problems are different. But they have, they have a particular way of addressing it there. For every boarded-up window and door, if you have an open window or door, or boarded-up window and door, there is a fine of $300 per opening, per day. As a consequence, people don't let their windows and doors become broken, they don't board up, they fix, okay, which is a much better solution for the community. So we have some recommendations for you, and it's just based on the research that we've done, and the articles that we've produced. We believe that it would be good for this council to send a delegation to Paducah, Kentucky, and take a look for yourself. We talked to the city manager there, who is more than willing to sit down with us. We think it's a, it may not be, you know, a perfect solution that they've got, but they've been really addressing it for quite a number of years, and they seem to have had some success. It might be good for us to go there and to talk to them, and find out what they're doing, and see if we can import some of that information here, and some of that technique. There has to be more pain for chronic offenders. Right now, there's very little. When you look at that example I gave of Philadelphia, $300 per opening, per day fines, versus ours, $44 to register to get on the list, and $32 a month. Not much pain. In fact, we seem to be rewarding the people who are chronic offenders in our community because of the property tax issue that I talked about just a minute ago. If they can get out of paying $7,000 to $12,000 in property taxes over the course of 10 years, because they haven't kept up their property, we're rewarding them for their lack of effort. We talked about, the last time I was here, municipal court, maybe that could be a way to address the issue. I don't know if staff has looked at that anymore, but instead of putting liens on properties, which is what we do now, to fine them, make them go to municipal court, make them face the judge, make them pay the fine, they have to pay the fine. They can't just say, "Sorry, I'm not going to do it, put a tax lien on my property, and I'll see about it in 10 or 15 years." So we think there do have to be much stiffer fines, more penalties for those who are chronic offenders in particular. So, action by the city council, we think, is important, and we've outlined some things. There's probably a lot of other things that could be done. If we could get a 51 percent reduction in crime, for instance, in the East Capitol area, where we have seen a lot of problems, we've seen problems of arson, sexual assault, burglary, break-ins, you know, that can't continue to happen. If we address this problem, we think that we can help alleviate that. By making improvements, making these properties come back to where they should be, it will provide more money for police, fire, and public safety. We want to be sure that the city lives up to its designation, the new one, of course, of America's most beautiful small town. We're lucky that we have that. There are some good reasons why we have, and we don't want to lose that. Last but not least, we simply want to protect the character and the unique architecture of our historic city of Jefferson. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Vile? All right, Steve, thanks again for being here. Oh, I'm sorry, Laura, go ahead.
I just want to thank you and your organization for what you do. I am a part of that organization, and I know the work that's involved in researching all of this, and doing newsletters, and the community outreach, and the education. In your research, in your study of this, and talking to different people in the community, and also reaching out across the table to different organizations about this issue, do you feel the sense that people are ready, are ready for this city to really work on?
I think they are. I think they are. We get a lot of positive feedback from members and non-members alike. I'm also involved with a group in town called the Heritage Council, and we bring together Old Munichberg, and the CVB, Old Town Revitalization, our own group, Historic City of Jefferson, and we talk about these issues. Everybody recognizes what a problem this is, and how it's holding our city back. You know, East Capitol Avenue should be the magnificent mile from the Capitol to the old MSP, and it's not. That's a shame. We can do better.
Any questions or comments for Steve? Ralph?
Just a quick comment. You brought up some very good points, and I would look forward to, and thank you for bringing that information to our attention, and I look forward to following up on much of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we're going to keep researching, and keep doing this, and we'll share our information with you as we get it.
Ken?
Thank you.
Thanks. Just one more question, Steve, sorry. And you may not have the answer to this, but Paducah, I know there's probably some turnover in properties that happened, that the owner couldn't pay the fine, didn't want to have the property any longer. Do you get the sense that with your group and your involvement in the community, that if a number of these properties came on the market, there would be willing buyers for them? Was that a challenge in Paducah? I know that the city took some properties, I guess, in Paducah, and it sounds like there's a lot to learn, maybe from what happened in that community, but...
I think part of the success they had was that it did force property owners to look at their situation, and if they can't afford, you know, they would put it on the market and sell. So they have seen that happen, of people coming forth and be willing to buy. And I think that's the case in Jefferson City. You know, we've been so fortunate here the last few years, of people really recognizing the value of historic preservation, and taking these old properties and making them new again. And I know for a fact, there are several properties, especially along East Capitol Avenue, that if the owner was willing to sell, they would be snapped up just like that.
Any other questions, Mr. Mahalovich?
I do appreciate you coming and talking with us again, and these are excellent articles, and I'm encouraged, I'm sure all of us have read those, and I, I want to, I want us to be sure that we address this problem in some fashion, and I appreciate your research, and I hope that our staff can, can get together and to give us a solution, and so we can move forward on this. I sense by what I've read, and what I know, is this isn't a costly item from a council standpoint, from a budget standpoint. It's a, it may be a costly item in terms of enforcement and, and that element, but it shouldn't be a large-budget item to create something that would start to work on, on these abandoned buildings.
I mean, it could actually make money for the city in terms of revenue, because of just the property taxes alone. But I think city staff is really trying hard, and I think there may be some budget considerations in terms of putting more people on the problem, which is one thing I think they did in Paducah, Kentucky. In fact, I was, and I don't, we'd have to verify this, but I was told firefighters actually got involved in doing inspections. So, you know, there's other ways to handle the problem than the way we do, and that's what we're trying to uncover.
Bob?
Steve, thanks for coming and presenting this to us. I know there's been a lot of consideration and work in the past, and it, it seems like it would be pretty easy to, you know, have a resolution of this problem, but it hasn't proven to be so.
No.
Sometimes it's harder, even as you suggest, to go through the municipal process. That's not proven to be quite as easy, maybe, as some of us thought it would be earlier. I would say for the benefit of the rest of the council, Kathy Bordner and I met, I don't know, it's been a few weeks ago now, maybe three weeks ago, and she gave me materials, in fact, I have a copy, the city now has a copy of materials in regard to this Paducah program, and some of the plans. In order to not make copies, it's a rather lengthy document. I brought it in, and Phyllis scanned it, so it's in our system, so it's available to every council member if you, if you want that material. And it does give some pretty good information there about how they're doing, what they're doing.
Seems pretty impressive, what they've done. It would be worth, I think, a fact-finding trip, or at least a conversation with the city manager down there.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Laura?
This is for Janice. Is the burden to the staff right now, do they have to do all the boarding up, and making sure that there's no openings?
The process that we use, if a, if a window's broken out, or a door's standing open, or we get a call from the police that the building is open, then that's when we, that's when we board it up. But we pay contractors, most of the time, we'll hire a contractor to do the boarding up.
Okay, so if it was switched that the property owner was fined for not having it boarded up, then that would free up staff time, in a sense, hopefully?
Well, the purpose is to keep ne'er-do-wells out of the building. So if a window is broken out, either that window has to be replaced, or it's, or has to be boarded up. So the choice to board it up is to basically secure the building. So that's the goal, the immediate goal.
Mr. Hilbert?
Going to say, what happens a lot of times is, then there's a conscious choice that Janice's staff has to make. If you send somebody to municipal court, they may never take corrective action until the end of court, which could be, you know, if somebody wants to stretch it out, we've got cases that are two years old, and that's certainly an exception, not the rule, but some of the recalcitrant landowners certainly have shown a willingness to do that. So the trade-off then, and you could do it, most of the time, you can do it both, both at tax at the same time, but the abatement part, we do to fix the problem, and then we can let municipal court go forward to maybe teach the landowner a lesson. The problem is that they won't necessarily fix it up immediately, because court takes so long, and the fine is what it is. Sometimes it's cheaper to just pay the fine and wait for us to go away, and I think certainly what Mr. Vile, probably one of the recommendations is, "Don't ever go away." So, anyway, just want to point out, municipal court's slow, abatement fast.
No, and I understand, I appreciate the staff time to do that, because if, if there was all those openings in, in the roofs, and the windows, and the doorways, we would have more fires, and, you know, more mold issues. But I was just trying to see if we could, you know, make the burden on the owner to do that, if they had the higher fines for those openings, you know, to free up staff time. I mean, I understand that fines aren't currently being paid as it is, so that would probably mean that we would have openings still, so, I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Steve, once again, thanks for coming, and thanks for your service to our city before. How long were you a councilman, Steve?
I'm sorry?
How long were you a councilman?
I was councilman for six years.
Did you enjoy all that?
I ran for mayor and thankfully didn't live.
No comment. Next, I see that we have a scout out here. Sir, could you come up to the podium, please? It's like, "Oh, Mom, you didn't tell me how to do this." All this structure without school, right?
Yeah.
For the record, tell us your name, and what troop you're with, and what badge you're trying to accomplish tonight.
My name is Erin Sakman. I'm with Troop 104, and I'm trying to get Communications Merit Badge.
Cool. Why don't you come up? I've got a city coin here for you. Appreciate you taking the time to come here. It could have went anywhere. We appreciate you coming to City Hall. Good luck, appreciate it. And thanks for your parents for bringing you here tonight, too. Okay, next we have, let's see, no announcements, no presentations underneath number nine. Number 10, Consent Agenda, our pre-meeting number, excuse me, letter D was deleted, that's going to come up under Finance Committee.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I think, let me clarify the process just a little bit. It only takes two people to pull it off, the Consent Agenda, and then be discussed individually. So what I'd recommend is someone actually make a motion, then, to send it to Finance.
Oh, okay.
Kind of keep the rules all clean.
I'll make a motion to send item D under Consent Agenda to the Finance Committee.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that D go to the Finance Committee. Everyone fine with that, or is that a voice vote? Voice vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That will go to the Finance Committee. Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we'll vote on the Consent Agenda as printed, A through Z, discussion. Seeing none, voice vote, Drew? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as printed? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next, we have bills introduced. First reading of Bill 201442, Mr. Betts, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes, and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri, for the calendar year 2014.
Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the clerk said, this is our annual property tax levy bill that we have. The current rate is set at 46 cents. We do have the opportunity this year to raise the ceiling, to, or raise the rate to the ceiling, which is 47.09 cents. That opportunity is presented to us every two years. It's based on whether or not it's a non-reassessment year, and this 2014 was a non-reassessment year for Cole County. A couple of other things, just so you know, for timing, per state statute, we are required to have a, the certifications to the Cole and Callaway County clerks by September 1st. Due to September 1st being a holiday this year, we'll have to have it to them by August the 29th. So, we will also have a public hearing on August the 18th, here at the council chambers, at 6 o'clock, or 6:15, whenever we get to it, to discuss that issue. Happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for Bill? Mr. Bray?
Bill, you have some examples of what the impact, if it was raised from its current level to the maximum level.
Sure.
What kind of impact that would have on... What kind of impact that would have on, say, a $150,000 value?
Yep. We've run the numbers, just to see if, anticipating some questions like that. The property tax, if we did raise it to the ceiling, would generate roughly $93,000 for the general fund. An impact on $150,000 assessed property value would be about $16.35 per year, so it would be, it's per year, not per month, sometimes I say per month, it's really per year, so just so you know, it's a big difference there.
Okay, any other questions?
You said $16?
$16.35, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions on 42? Alright, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 201443, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 1.1 acres from RS3, Single Family Residential, to C1 Neighborhood Commercial, for land addressed as 2104 Industrial Drive, described as part of the southeast quarter of Section 2, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the old fire station, well, currently Fire Station Number 3 on Industrial Drive. In order to assist with the sale of the property, the proposal is to rezone this land from RS3, Single Family Residential, to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. The entire parcel is larger than what is being proposed to be rezoned, only the front part, where the building is, and the parking lots are proposed to be rezoned. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended this at their meeting on July 10th, and also involved to be a comprehensive plan amendment. This is the zoning map of the area. The land across Industrial Drive is M2 Industrial. There's an office building immediately to the west, it's CO Office Commercial. And then, the comprehensive plan shows this area in public use, which if sold, would no longer be in public use. So that's why the rezoning is needed, and the comprehensive plan amendment would note the area for commercial use. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the zoning of C1 Neighborhood Commercial and the comprehensive plan amendment showing commercial use at their meeting in July. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Janice on 43? Alright, moving on, first reading of 44, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2014, to October 31, 2015, reflecting funds as approved in the fiscal year 2015 Unified Planning Work Program.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the annual planning grant agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. It funds our MPO. The federal amount is $141,627. That represents 80% of the total work program. This program does require 20% local match. The local match is a total of $35,406, and the local match is paid for by the City of Jefferson and Cole County. Jefferson City's contribution would be $26,554.50. That would be included in the budget at that amount.
Any questions for Ms. McMillan on 44? Okay, moving on, we'll have first reading of 45, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department, amending the 2013-2014 annual budget within the Police Training Fund.
Chief Schrader?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill establishes a supplemental appropriation from the Police Training Fund for the purposes of police training. Due to budget constraints, no funds were allocated in our existing training line items this year. In lieu of that method of funding, $40,000 was allocated from this Police Training Fund for the purpose of training, and those funds are generated from cases filed through municipal court, so it's an ongoing Police Training Fund. We currently have a need for an additional $17,000 to satisfy training needs from the present date through the end of the fiscal year. There's a balance of approximately $75,315 in the Police Training Fund. We've listed in the bill summary the general training topics, which will be addressed with that additional funding, and the request was reviewed by the Public Safety Committee and forwarded to the full council with no objection. Thank you.
Any questions of 45? Bob?
Chief, I, excuse me, I wasn't able to attend Public Safety this last meeting, so I'm not real familiar with this, but I guess, a question comes to mind here, if those funds are dedicated funds, why didn't we allocate them at the time of budget? I don't remember. You know, I may have been a part of, I'm sure I voted with the majority not to do it, but I don't understand why. Did we understand at the time that those were dedicated funds?
Well, I'll try to answer your question, you can correct me, but if we go back to a year ago, and the development of the budget, there were discussions, and we provided input, but when the budget numbers were eventually disseminated, they changed it a bit from what they thought they would be, and it ended up with $40,000 allocated from that fund. We knew at the time that that would probably be an insufficient amount, but that's what was in the budget.
Okay.
If we harken back to the context and perspective that we had a year ago, everybody was extremely conservative. We do reject a lot of training requests, but this is very similar to years past, and sometimes we spend a lot more than what we anticipate spending this year. But we generally have funds allocated through the general fund process, but that has been zeroed out, so this was our only resource. It was used, but not as the only source of training in years past.
Okay, well, I mean, I can understand zeroing out general funds, because that is general funds, but if these are dedicated funds, and they can't be spent on anything other than, than police training, now, I can also see where we would hold some in reserve so that we could go forward with training funds, but I'm not sure I understand why we either didn't put it up front, or maybe we didn't realize that training need was there, and we decided to hold it in reserve. Maybe that's not a question for you, that's probably a conversation among the council, but I guess it's something we need to keep in mind for our next budget, budgeting process.
I think what I'm trying to say is, we had expressed a need for more money than that, but that's what was allocated to us, and now that we're nine months into this fiscal year, and this resource remains, we're coming back to the council and expressing again the need for additional funds.
Okay. But, and it is coming from dedicated money that is collected for that purpose?
Yes.
Any other questions, Chief, on 45?
I don't know that, I picked up that you mentioned the balance of that currently. I remember it being about $75,000, is that right?
Yes, sir, I think $75,315.
Okay, and I do concur with Councilman Scrivener that we may need to look on how we manage that money, so we don't hold you back, because you've been wanting this on last month's agenda, so we're gonna try to do a little better on that.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Chief, on 45? Alright, moving on, we'll have first reading of 46, please.
An ordinance amending Section 19401 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to parking on a portion of Tyler Street.
Mr. Rash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As clerk indicated, this ordinance would revise the city code as, in regard to a no parking zone on Tyler Street. That's in the area near Monroe Street, and the new Capital Region Hospital construction, Tyler Street actually intersects Monroe Street. But the request came from the residents in the area, at this particular location, they are legally blind, and they utilize handiwheels and other taxi services, many, to get about town. They have found it's hard to access those vehicles on this narrow street, it's 24-foot wide street, it's already parking removed on one side. The issue went to the Transportation and Traffic Commission, and they recommended that council approve the request.
Any questions of Matt on 46? Alright, moving on, first reading of 47, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with SAC Construction LLC for the sewer rehabilitation Basin 12 project.
Mr. Rash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a construction contract with SAC, it's a pipelining contract in our Basin 12 area of the city, for sanitary sewers, and that basin's roughly bounded by Highway 179, Boonville Road, and West Main Street. The project would actually line over six miles of sanitary sewers in that area, and the reason for that is they're old, leaking, those kind of things, keep out the water infiltration, which then subsequently helps with basement backups and things of that nature. The contracts for $955,000, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Matt? Alright, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 48, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Rash?
Thank you. And, as clerk indicated, this is a grant agreement that's administered through MoDOT for their local operating assistance for our transit system. The amount of the grant this year, it's a, it's an annual grant appropriation from MoDOT, but it runs from basically July to July, the state's fiscal year. The amount of this year's grant is $3,986, down substantially again from last year, I believe last year was just over $8,200. Obviously, this grant is reduced each, seems to be reduced each year, it used to be much higher, but it is money available, and we'd recommend approval of the grant agreement.
Any questions on 48? Alright, seeing none, we'll have first reading of 49, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Matt, before we do that, I see here that Mr. Scrivener, someone may want to suspend, Bob?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we suspend the rules on 2014-49, and have third reading tonight.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, are there more than two or more council members that would disapprove of that? In other words, not suspending the rules? Please let me know, otherwise, the rules will be officially suspended, and we'll have a third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this, really what's on the council agenda is a supplemental appropriation, but the purpose of it is to purchase road salt for this year's contract. Requesting suspension of the rules just due to the timing of the bid, when we have to accept the bid or not, which is by August 10th, 30 days from when we received the bid. The, this issue was discussed at our Public Works and Planning Committee, and they recommended approval, but basically, in a nutshell, the cost of road salt this year is, went up almost 70% on our bids, anyway, from what we had previously, I think it was around $64 a ton last year, and now we're a little over $106 a ton. The, some folks who have bid have not received bids, we only received one bid this year, typically we would get two, and we did get many letters back from other suppliers indicating they weren't able to give us a bid just due to supply issues. The, so anyway, the purpose of the $25,000, currently the city already has in its budget $175,000 to purchase chemicals, road salt, but our minimum amount this year is, which they will be enforcing in the contract, will require us to preorder $200,000 worth of salt, and so we would be $25,000 short, so that's the purpose of the supplemental. The remainder of the minimum purchase would be filled next year, in next year's budget, which is right now scheduled for $225,000 in that item. Be happy to answer any questions, but again, purpose is to suspend the rules tonight, so we can place our order yet this week and obtain the salt.
Okay, questions, comments? Bob?
Just make a comment, we were told in the Public Works Committee that there's a possibility this salt may even be coming from Chile, because of the fact that production just won't handle the demand. I guess apparently every public works department across the country, certainly not everyone, I guess, but all those that endured snow last year, and there were many that did, are having trouble filling their needs for their salt this year. So while we hate to pay those kinds of prices, that is a commodity, and commodities work according to supply and demand.
Very much. Mr., I'm sorry, Carlos?
Matt, is it the same vendor that's used by City of Columbia as well, too?
You know, I'm not certain who they utilize. We actually bid our salt with Cole County, and Holt Summit also piggybacks on our process, so they would typically utilize the same person in this area.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on 49, which is suspended, by the way? Any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll go into Bill's pending, a third reading of 201438.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, relinquishing a sanitary sewer easement across Track B of Westview Heights subdivision, Section 9, Bagnall Drive and Jasper Lane.
Mr. Rash?
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this ordinance would vacate a sanitary sewer easement, it's in the Westview Heights subdivision. The purpose was to build a house on this lot, which was encumbered by a sanitary sewer, so they have relocated the sewer, and now we can abandon the easement, the old easement, we have the new easement in place, and they can proceed with their home construction.
Any questions of Mr. Rash on 38? Council debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, third reading of 201439, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a defense-cost-sharing agreement with Cole County and supplementally appropriate the funds for the agreement from the reserve fund.
Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement with the county and all the other taxing jurisdictions within Cole County have also entered into this agreement already, where we would share the cost of a defense on a suit against Ameren. Ameren's alleging they owe far less on property taxes for their infrastructure. It's actually going on throughout the entire state, and all the counties have banded together, and Cole County's share of that is $236,812. So Cole County's asked that the taxing jurisdictions share half of their costs, so they're gonna put in the first $118,000, they've requested the second $118,000 come from the other jurisdictions, which also benefit, would benefit from this, and paying a pro-rata share, and I believe ours is 11%, and so our share is $14,220.16. Again, the Cole County share is tapped first, and they only come after us pro-rata after that. Because we don't have a fund dedicated to this type of finance, we had recommended and suggested the $14,226 come out of the reserve fund. It's actually unlikely it'll be used this year, although I can't say for sure, it just depends on whether the case goes to court or not.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Hilbert on 39? Debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri accepting the name of Creek Trail Drive for the extension of Creek Trail Drive from Portobello Place Drive to Le Carr Drive.
Matt? I'm sorry, Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would accept the name of Creek Trail Drive for that roadway that's currently under construction would extend from the end of Creek Trail Drive to Le Carr.
Any questions of staff on number 40? Any debate? Roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2014-41.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2013-2014 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by changing the personnel schedule changes within planning and protective services.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would, does a number of things. The most important purpose is to restore the building official position. This position would take over the Building Regulations Division, be responsible for the supervision of inspection staff, work with the development community on administration of the code. This bill also identifies or separates the inspection function, identifies some training opportunities for the inspectors, and creates a grade that inspectors can aspire to when they achieve certifications that, for certifications or more, they would be eligible for their advancement to a higher grade. This recognizes their achievement in obtaining the certifications and also provides evidence to the community that they have achieved a higher level of ability in their field.
Questions, Councilman Scrivener?
I think probably more a comment than a question. I just wanted to thank Janice and Mr. Crowe for bringing this to the Public Works Committee and explaining to us in more depth, I guess, as we got an opportunity to ask questions about it and discuss it. And I appreciate that they are taking steps to address what has been somewhat of a, I don't want to say problem, that's probably not the right word, but I can't think of a better one right now, but a deficiency in the department since we've had a early retirement and so there's been some staffing shortfalls. And I think this is an excellent step toward reorganization and improvement in service. Not that you haven't given good service in the past, but I think this will help move the service level to a higher level. And I commend you for taking those steps.
Any comments by council? Debate? Roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivener.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Costalis.
Aye.
Motion passes. Nothing on the informal calendar tonight. Any resolutions to bring forward this evening?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward.
Okay. Do you have a copy of it for everyone?
I just, I do one, I happen to decide if I was even going to do this or not.
Okay. Maybe we can, I tell you what, we'll take a five-minute recess while the council and the public can get a copy of this resolution, if that's okay with you, Mr. Bray. Did you make the motion?
Yeah. What are we doing?
Recession, five minutes.
Move to recess, five minutes.
It's been moved and seconded. All who are in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Seeing five.